Okay, we'll get the council meeting started. I have to step into the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Julie, roll call, please.
Mayor Mollard.
Present.
Councilor Gerson.
Present.
Councilor Nash.
Here.
Councilor Tross.
Here.
I am here.
Councilor Gorley. Councilor Coleman.
Present.
Let the record show we have six present and one not present this evening. At this time, I'll ask council if they would like to approve the excused absence of Councilor Gorley.
Do we know why she's not here?
No idea. Motion, second.
So moved?
Moved to approve.
To approve her absence?
Okay, I'm going to motion to approve her absence. I need a second. Okay, therefore now, I need a motion to not excuse.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. All papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Record show we have five ayes, one nay was not an excused absence. Consent agenda.
Move to approve.
I'll second that.
Motion, second. All papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The record show we have six ayes and one absent. Approval of consent agenda. Moving on, first of all, we have any visitors, we have visitors this evening, but do we have any that would like to come forth before council be heard? Okay, move on to your old business, and we do have visitors this evening. We have a couple distinguished guests this evening. We have Cherry Springer here, and we have Will Tucker, county commissioner, on video. So go ahead and get.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Over the past couple of weeks, obviously, we've been in kind of a new reality, living in kind of unusual and certainly unprecedented time. And there's been a lot of questions about how we get through this, how we work through this, and it varies quite honestly from state to state. And all of you have approached me with questions at some point in time about what's going on. And so I thought, what better way than to invite the people who are most closely involved and represent us, the representative Springer and Commissioner Tucker. So I reached out to both Rep. Springer and Commissioner Tucker, and they both gladly accepted the offer to come and answer any questions that you might have related to the COVID-19 pandemic, to the economy reopening, our economy as it's being called, or reopening Oregon. In the past week, the governor has laid down some ground rules. It will be reopened by county, and our county commissioners have been working hard to help us get back open and back to normal. So in your packet on page 1314, there's a letter from Oregon's attorney general to the city of, to Oregon City, and it spells out the governor's authority with her executive orders. And I think it does, obviously, it does a very good job of explaining that to everybody, and also lists some consequences if you were to try and defy the governor's orders. I've given you a packet this evening as well as some information. The top sheet is a memo from the Oregon Association of Chiefs of Police and the Oregon State Sheriff's Association. And it's obviously to chiefs and sheriffs regarding the governor's authority and love. Behind that are various documents that have been put out by the governor's office and Oregon Health Authority related to reopening, to the different phases. And towards the back, Oregon Health Authority has been giving guidance for employers, and they actually even breaks it down by specific sectors. So I wanted to make sure that you were aware of that. I emailed those as well to everybody, I think, today. If you don't find it in your email, give me a shout, and I'll make sure that I get it to you. But with that, I thought I'd let Representative Springer and Commissioner Tucker talk a little bit about things. My thought was probably Representative Springer could discuss what's going on at the state level regarding the governor's authority, and then I thought we could turn it over to Commissioner Tucker, who could talk about the work that's being done at the county level to get everything opened back up. And then between the two of them, he could probably answer just about any question that we might have. So with that, I guess, Representative, if you wanted to give us any information you might have or help us out, yeah.
Sounds good. I can do that. First of all, I am not sick, and I do not have a sore throat. I've been on the phone almost nonstop for 24 hours, and the voice is about gone, so nothing contagious. So just a couple things. Will, Commissioner Tucker can talk to you about the plan and how that is working with the state. I'm just going to share with you some of the things I've heard, some of the experiences, and maybe some concerns that I have. Probably like most of you in this room, I am extraordinarily anxious to be done with this. And so, but we've got to be careful in that. And I hear a lot of people across the state talking about, I was talking to a woman after the commissioners' meeting last week, and she said, "I'm just going to pay my $1,000 fine and open up." I said, "Well, that's not exactly how it works." The governor, truly, this could be a class C misdemeanor. That's not just a ticket, that's a fine. Some vocational licenses have a requirement that you have no criminal record. So there's a bit of an issue there. It's not as simple as you write a $1,000 check and you're good to go for the duration. And I told her, I said, frankly, I said, "I'm more concerned about OSHA." OSHA is on job sites. OSHA's driving around. That's what OSHA does. They need to protect workers. But they are very, very vigilant right now, very vigilant. And their fines are much heftier. You've probably heard the $70,000 figure batted around. That's not in fun. That is looked at as perhaps a second time going out. And when I share that with you, I'm not saying that's exactly how it will be. That is how it looks to be unfolding, okay? So I really caution you there. Again, Commissioner Tucker's going to talk about opening up 15th. 15th is a magical date. I don't know about anybody else. I'm really looking forward to the 15th. And that will allow some, that if your plan is approved, and I have no idea where you're at in that process, if your plan is approved, then you can have certain gatherings up to 25. Now, there's a whole nother conversation that can, that is focused around in what rooms in the building. I mean, is that 25 in Sweet Home City Hall? Or is that 25 in a particular room and then another 25? And I'm not answering that question because I don't have the answer. So these are the kinds of things that you need to wrestle with. One of the concerns, it's my personal concern, there's a stipulation that numbers don't spike. Maybe things, if you're planned, if approved, open, and then numbers begin to spike, it could be shut back down. I think numbers are going to spike when people start moving more. I just do. So I'm very concerned about that. I'm encouraging people to use any precaution that they want. I've been saying for weeks now, the, one of the things about the governor's order, the stay home, stay safe order, is when it's lifted, you still get to stay home if you don't feel safe. And I'm telling people that if you aren't comfortable in a grocery store, have the groceries delivered. So nobody's forced to go out once the order is lifted to some extent. The other question I hear a lot is, "The governor can't do this. She does not have the constitutional authority to do this." Now, I risked being shot as the messenger here tonight, but I have sorted through that issue with others. I've sorted through that issue with people that think like me, and I've sorted through issues, that issue with people that don't think like me, and they land on the same dime, which is the governor has taken this action under a particular statute in the Oregon revised statute, not the Constitution. So we're hearing all the time that Constitution says she has to do this and this. True, if she had enacted her order based on that. However, she did, she enacted her order based on O R S 401 and some subsections there. And I have gone round and round to see if there is a legitimate challenge there. And frankly, I find it interesting, because I was meeting with Sheriff Yorn last week or this week, last few days, I don't remember when, and it was the attorneys for the Oregon State Sheriff's Association he talked to, and they also landed on the same dime. I think I'm going to leave it there because I think you have some questions, and you probably want to tell me how frustrated and irritated you are that businesses are still shut down. I am, I am. I talked to a hairdresser today, not that I got a haircut, at the courthouse. Yeah, today. She was there at the meeting. And she says, "I did a trial run. I put all the P P E on that I'm supposed to have on," and she wears glasses, and she said, "I can't see. I can't figure out how to do it." She says, "I can't figure out how to get a haircut and wear all this stuff." She says, "It's just not going to work." And she is digging and dyer straits. I just encouraged her. I said, "You know, you will figure it out. Just keep working at it, figuring it out." Literally, there are people going belly up. Businesses are not making it. I don't know how many people in this room are carefully choosing where you eat out and where you give those dollars when you eat out, or one day about five dozen doughnuts at Sugar Vibes and having taken over to the veterans' home. Many of us are doing what we can to keep the economy stumbling through, is really what I think it is. But I hear your frustrations about hoping I'm going to stop there and take your questions if that's how you would like to do it, sir.
Counselor's open for questions at this time. Well, this might be a better answer for Will, but so who's going to make the call for Sweet Home to open up? Is that going to be the county? Are we going to have the authority to do that ourselves?
So this is Will, and I will try to address that by saying that the authority to open any business in the county has been taken by the governor, and she believes she has authority. And what we are doing is making an application to open businesses in Lynn County based upon the criteria set forth by the governor. So I have no authority other than health authority to close your businesses. I have no right to close them. I did not close them. And so we have no right to open them when we have the governor telling us what Representative Springer just related to you and more, because I get a lot of money from her, that if we are, we need to work well with her, and we are trying to. Having said that, you know, I have seen National Frozen Foods have 19 employees sick. One of them passed. I shouldn't say that because we don't want to identify where the deaths came from, but understand that did in fact happen. One of them passed. And so being open and not being, they were wearing face shields, they weren't wearing masks, they were allowed to take breaks together. So there were some things that maybe were wrong, and they're being fined for that. But the authority to open and close was not taken by the county. If I had closed you because of health and safety, I currently have a racetrack that was going to be closed, and we, I would currently have maybe a hotel rest, hotel swimming pool sometimes closed. Those type of things happen from time to time. If I close it under health authority, I open it back up under the same authority, or they take me to court, and a judge helps us decide whether or not I improperly or properly closed the facility down. So I'm not closing, I'm not opening anything in Sweet Home. What we did was we responded to the governor's request as quickly as she said we could. She said, "Here's my draft plan." We sent a plan in. She says, "Here's my revised draft." It's still a draft. We sent a plan in. When she finally said, "This is my final," we sent a plan in. She's accepted that plan, and we were the ninth or 10th county to get a plan in. We are asking for her to allow the sectors that she has declared as ready, she believes with criteria, for the 15th to be open on the 15th. And I want to correct something that Representative Springer said a second ago. Retail is open now. The governor has changed her rules on retail. She's not waiting to the 15th. That's open now. That's a change in the last couple of days. A week and a half, I would have told you parks were closed. Last week, she changed that ruling, and we quickly started opening parks up on Monday of this week. In fact, we've taken in $60,000 in revenue in just the few days that we've been open and are filling up quickly. But the whole concept is she has a list of sectors, and some things aren't in that list. And so to understand that if you were in retail men's clothing, you're on the list, it tells you what to do. But if you're a bowling alley, you're not. If you're a karate for kids, you're not. If you're a health club, you're not. And there's a whole long list, movie theaters, you're not. A whole long list of businesses that are not. And some of them are calling me, like the suggestion about church a minute ago, about having people maybe go into different rooms and small groups of people in the church. That question was asked of the governor last Thursday by a commissioner, and her response was, because the person suggested, the commissioner suggested, that we actually have, if you, church had multiple rooms, and each room had a video camera of the sanctuary, could you have 25 people, people in each room? And the Oregon Health Authority responded, they thought that was a novel way of approaching it. As long as they did not congregate in the entrance or the exits, where they would have more than 25 people in one of those positions, you could. That's splitting a hair, but I know my church is suffering. We would love to be able to get back together. And they broadcast to the cars. Unique solution. Windows were up, cars, doors were closed. Everybody was inside, no bathrooms, 45 minutes. They got to at least see each other, wave, honk horns, wind down windows and yell. But it's what we've, it's what we've turned into. Having said that, a church, a number of church groups, Baker County is where it's being held, have sued the governor, believing that she's exceeded the U.S. Constitution, and are attempting to get her in restraining order by this weekend to allow, to stop the state from enforcing church closures. So what's in the plan? If you go to the governor's website, I've sent Ray links. I think he sent them out to you. But things on there change every couple of days, and I don't get notified that they're changing. The only work group I participated in personally was the recreation one. And I know like the woman who was talking to Representative Springer today at the board meeting, she volunteered to work on the beauty parlor portion, and she's not. I have a person in Lebanon who's a gym owner who had a business going two months when this came, and she's still paying her rent. She is the only employee. But she, regardless, she's, she's, she volunteered and has volunteered multiple times with Oregon Health Authority to sit on the gym's athletic club sporting activity work group. Those work groups are meeting. I don't have anyone on those work groups. As soon as something draft comes out, if I see it, I'll share it with your city manager. He's been kind enough, as was your mayor, to log into the county commissioner one last week. And I will always invite people to come and join us, and the city manager of Albany did as well. And so we had a number of city people on, but it's not my call, Mr. Tross, Councilman Tross, it's not my call to open or close.
You have a question?
I put him to sleep.
Well, I just want to know when we're going to know. I mean, is it going to be the 15th? Or are we going to be waiting until Kate Brown gets off of her, out of her anyway, and let us do something? I mean, can we open?
I write to the governor's. Okay, so I write to the governor's office almost daily. Today, I think it was three times, because I had bowling alleys in other communities who don't believe their county commissioners, who at that time hadn't submitted a plan, were listening to them. There was the promise to the gym owner that I remind them again of this person wanting to be part of and talk about what they've done, and it's a challenge. So we had a deadline to get a plan in. Our plan was in. It was accepted as in meeting the content minimum that the governor set forth. Today, Commissioner Nyquist missed the entire board meeting. He was on the phone with other chairs of other commissions as O H A looked at the applications and had questions about applications. Changing things, let me talk about that for a second. When we wrote that document, I did it late into night Thursday. I came in early Friday morning, got it to Rod, Commissioner Nyquist, and Lindsay first thing in the morning. They both had edits. We sent it out to the command center and our sheriff's office to get out to the police chiefs to ask if they had P P E. Fire chiefs got P P E. If you're urban or rural, things all changed, the all different criteria. Regardless, it was sent out to our infectious disease doctor, to Samaritan Health, and their advisory councils. We got back feedback. We edited. We got ours in by noon. It was accepted by a little after, around 1:00. What does accepted mean? It means the criteria is met. She talked about people would work on them over the weekend. Today is Tuesday. They're still working on it. But when we submitted our plan on Friday at noon, we had 21 people in a class on tracing. Those 21 people were taking the four segments of class being taught by O H A for people around the state to do contact tracing. When they, and we knew they were taking that class, so in our criteria to the governor, which was going to be evaluated the weekend, we would have 30 people. When she asked me to have, hired up to have 19 on staff, we would have 30, because some of the people are only want to work part-time because they're hoping to get back to their other jobs and lives. So regardless, turns out that in the class that ended at noon on Monday, as they were ending the class, they announced this one new segment, a fifth new segment. And the fifth new segment is on their new tracing software that's being written, because sometimes so many people are putting data into the tracing software, it crashes because it was never designed for a pandemic. And so they're creating new software. So when they saw that I had 19 trained people, they told Commissioner Nyquist that that was not true. And it's absolutely correct. It was true at the time we wrote it. We thought it would be true, but they're absolutely correct. I only have nine people trained, and they have agreed that we won't make a big deal out of it, because for me, they moved the goalpost, and we, and we believe that they moved the goalpost. And, and so we are, we attempted today, not attempted today, we did sign a memorandum of understanding with Oregon State University School of Public Health to have some people who have been trained on the old system to hire up to 10 of them. And, and I don't know. When will we know? I don't know. They changing the rules as we go, and that's the reality. They're changing what's in the sector and out of the sector. That's happened a couple of times the last few days, and I can't, I can't do much about that except respond. And I'm sorry.
Questions?
I apologize for being whiner.
You have any questions, Counselor?
No, I apologize for being late.
No problem. Will, anything change on restaurants within the last day or so?
So no, except that people who have looked at the criteria, some have called me and told me they cannot live with that social distancing, that their restaurant is older, has booths, and to close down every other booth and ultimately across from each other would make it financially impossible for them to exist. And so they're going to probably not open until we can change the social distancing to something different, and they'll stay open doing to-go orders. And how they almost don't think they can survive doing that. So no, restaurants has not changed at all today.
Anything else, Will, or and Cherry, anything else you'd like to add?
I would just say, I have, I lost track of how many people reached out to my office. I was asking for help with their unemployment benefits, health issues, all sorts of things, businesses. And frankly, I encourage you to continue to do that. If you have a specific question or a specific issue that you're stuck wrestling with, let me know. Now, normally, I turn around and my office can get you an answer within a couple of days. That's not the way it's working right now. It's much slower, but we are making progress. So if there's a question, you shoot me an email at the capital, and we'll get on it, and we'll do our best to problem solve that for you or get an answer for you.
Sure, appreciate it. I know in the last week and a half, I've been bombarded with phone calls from small businesses, obviously needing to get open. The financial crisis, it was starting to hit them, their pocketbook pretty severely. And later in the council, our city manager has, and the staff has done a great job of coming up with at least somewhat of a relief, and we'll talk about that this evening. But I appreciate all your efforts, Will and Cherry, and we know you're fighting for us, and we appreciate everything you do for us.
You're welcome. It's what I get paid to do, and I appreciate you coming down to Lebanon to sit in, because I had a person in Lebanon who's, who's very active in the business community and had been one of the vocal folks for my Lebanon community. So I appreciate you going, coming up, coming down and joining in there.
No problem. Thank you.
And I hope you won't be offended if I leave after this portion, or do you want me to?
No, we just, I know that we are, there was a lot of questions and concerns, and I just want to make sure the council's up to speed and any questions and what we.
Think of it later, you know how, and where to get in touch with me.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Will.
The same is true for me. Give me a call at the courthouse or on my cell phone. Thank you much. Bye.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to reiterate, if anybody needs to get in touch with us, the questions, especially if it regards to unemployment, sometimes our office has more availability to just access. Maybe the people don't understand the process, and we can access the process for them and maybe walk them through the process. So if anybody has small businesses and need to know, or I know that there is, but also unemployment questions, if they want to send them my way.
Sure. Appreciate that. Counselor Coleman, appreciate that. Julie, would you like to duly note, record that Counselor Gorley has arrived and to change that to just late? Thank you. Moving on to council, request for council action. We've been pushing this for a while now. We just need to put it to a closure, the city manager's evaluation. Unless there's some questions, just need to cancel action here to prove it and move forward. We had done, so.
So moved.
Motion, second, to approve the city manager's evaluation as done here in the last couple of meetings. You want to do it by roll call?
Councilor Coleman.
Aye.
Councilor Gorley.
Aye.
Councilor Goble.
Yes.
Councilor Tross.
Maybe. Maybe. Yes.
Counselor Nash? Counselor Carson?
Yes.
Mayor Mahler?
Yes. On the record, shall we have seven ayes, no nays, approval of the city manager's evaluation? Information only ordinance number seven for 2020 water systems and critical affected chemical area, page 31 through 37.
Basically on that is waiting for some, let them talk to the BUC after our last meeting, and I'm waiting for some information from them. It might keep coming up this next time.
Okay.
With, with the answers that I had online type and everything closely for you. But it didn't make sense. Piece and meal ended in, so I'm waiting for some answers.
Okay. Any questions, councilors, regarding that?
I'll be expecting another long one perhaps two weeks from now, just for your planners.
We got a speed reader?
Yeah.
I can make it go faster.
Information only RFP for operation and maintenance of the city water and wastewater treatment facility, page 30 through 79.
May I go ahead and turn it over to our court courts director?
Just to say that? Yeah, this is a topic we have been kicking around for 10 months, 11 months. Started off with an audit. We found some deficiencies. We kicked around. We, we allowed Jacobs to make some corrections and work with us. And eventually directed was that we were to kind of develop an RFP and kind of look for some vendors and see what, what we have for options. With that, with everything that's kind of went on, we took that time. And I want to give Trish and Stephen all the credit on this because they've worked. They really dove down into the details of this RFP. They looked at other cities up in Oregon that had worked with Jacobs. We also included a consultant that had helped us develop the tech memo when we were trying to figure out how much it would cost to operate all these plants. That person, Mark Walters, has experience working with the city of Sandy, city of Gresham, Coos Bay, who all interacts with Jacobs. So we took that time. We took multiple other contracts and developed something that we feel that would work for Sweet Home, right? And with that, I kind of want to tee it up to Stephen and Trish a little bit to talk about it, maybe answering the questions that you guys have. But we do have a little presentation, and I'll turn it over to Stephen, right, in one day?
Yeah. Okay. So we got a new timeline for, no, so differences on the contract. In the current contract, there's a $30,000 repair budget that, that's what's included in the contract, but it's open-ended. They can basically charge as much to repairs as they want as long as it's below $3,000 the charge. Could be $150,000. There's really no limits. There's no controls. There's no oversight. The new contract, we raised the repair limit to 50,000, but we're, the city's hanging on to that money if it all goes through as proposed. And we'll have a lot of oversight repairs, and if they reach the 50,000, there's an option to extend it and enlarge it, but at least it has some control so that we can budget for it better, work it out. It just being an uncontrolled cost. The other big difference is we moved all the chemicals, the sludge hauling, garbage, all the utility fees out of the contract into the city so that we're no longer paying an escalation fee of 3% or whatever it is on top of all those. So whatever they cost, we pay. They're our responsibility. It make, really makes the contract more of a labor contract. We've taken most of the risk out for repairs, for all the other stuff. So we're just basically hiring people through them, expert people to do the work. It's, it limits risk for them because if electricity goes way up, we should get a better price because they don't have, the cities take keeping that risk. It's a minimal risk, but if a long-term contract, it's still a risk.
Let me give you an example on chemicals, electricity. Those are some of our biggest charges when we talk about this contract. So let's take this leap that we just fixed, which was about 30% of our, our average production. In the Jacobs contract, they would see that savings. They're probably currently seeing those savings this month. But in this contract, those savings would have been directly back to us. If that makes sense, why would we do something like that?
They're using 30% less fluoride, 30% less hypochloride.
And then you also have this component of the maintenance side of it. And the reason we extended that is because we want to be able to review the repairs that they're doing. We want to be able to determine if we want to capitalize. You know, extend the life of something. It's, it's, do we want to budget it? Do we want to push it out a year? Do we want to replace it versus repair it, right? It gives us options to do those types of things. Sorry, I just wanted to, so let's talk timelines.
So this is how it lays out, assuming on the next council meeting, you guys pull the trigger and say go. There is a potential, in the August one, we actually write the termination letter that Jacobs will renegotiate. They have a six-month clause in the contract. So potentially, we can negotiate, renegotiate that along with whoever's going to be the new contract operator, have like three-way negotiations and move that timetable up. But as it stands, March 1st, we have a new contract operator taking it over.
An example in Sandy, when they separated from Jacobs, I would imagine it went from a 90-day to a 60-day.
Well, it was, they had six months in their contract also, and they did it in 60 days.
Well, any questions? Yeah, any questions?
Any questions, councilors?
It's a lot in here. Now, so what's happened? We, there's not a contract in here. We're going to try to go out and we're going to put this out for 45 days. Forty, what's forty, what, 45 days, we're going to get that information back from the proposed vendors. We're going to interview them. We're going to go through that whole process of selecting that. We can then probably, once we've defined who that person is, we would then at some point enter into negotiations, try to hone in some of these things on the contract.
So, Mr. Mayor, I have a question. So first of all, this is a very, very different contract than the other one. It's very well done, very professional, and I was, and very thorough. So I appreciate that very much. I do have one question about the RFP. When you're talking about the experience that you're looking for, it, you've mentioned that you're looking for somebody, some company that's had experience in managing wastewater operations during the design and construction of new and expanded facilities. Would it be a disqualification if they didn't have that experience, if everything else seemed good?
It wouldn't be a disqualification.
It wouldn't be a, you know, we'll take all the whole grading system and I'll maybe let Trish, because she was the one that kind of defined some of that. But, you know, going into this project, this is a big project for Sweet Home.
Yes.
Right? We, we want to know that people understand that as plants expand, that they understand the logistics of moving wastewater around and solids and the time that it takes to do that. I've been on, worked for several different agencies that have expanded multiple times, and it can make a big difference when you're talking about keeping something operational for the community and constructing at the same time.
I'm just concerned that, I don't know how many local, local, you know, Oregon wastewater plants have been rebuilt, so how much experience are you going to have, I guess is my question.
Well, these companies that have been reaching out to us are not just Oregon. They're not from Oregon. We've got some national, some pretty big players.
Okay.
They are highly interested.
Well, I'm, I'm very impressed with this document. Thank you.
Well, I, again, I want to give Stephen and Trish all the props. We've all been busy, and they have really dived into this, and I couldn't be prouder.
Well, good job.
Thank you.
That was well done. Any other questions, councilors? Thank you. Information only RFP for engineer of record, page 82106.
This is pretty much, I want to give props again to Trish because this is the contract she wrote or the RFP that we actually put out a year ago. Right now, we have a one-year with a three-year option with Murray Smith. There's been some change in personnel at Murray Smith. They also are still doing a great job on our wastewater project, and this is for all the little things that we're trying to get done in town. Because of that personnel change, you know, I, I kind of feel that maybe they may be too big. They're up in Portland. We have somebody that was on our team in Murray Smith that's no longer there. And that's okay. The, the, his team that he assembled is awesome. I, I think what we're looking for is a better fit for Sweet Home. Some of the things that I've reached back out to Civil West and some of these other, and I, I think it would be to our interest to put it out again. We don't have to do anything to Murray Smith. All we're saying is we're going to let it in. They've been working on water modeling right now. They've been doing the hypochlorite system at the treatment plant. They have also been working on SDCs, which you guys have been hearing. So they've been actively working. But we think we, for some of our street projects and things like that, it may be better if we seek for others. So what we like to do is put this RFP back out again, not extend, and I've already had those discussions with Murray Smith, not extend that another three years, end that one year, and then go into a new contract. So all we want to do is put this back out again.
Any questions, councilors? Thank you. Appreciate all your efforts. You're doing a great job. Thank you. Local COVID relief grant program. I'll turn this over to Ray. I think Ray and the staff have done a great job of coming up with this program. I think it's a good opportunity for some small businesses that are suffering.
Thank you. Yeah, so we have been actively standing on the sidelines in a lot of this, trying to figure out the best way to help any local businesses, particularly any of them who may have fallen through the cracks and not received any federal funding. I, I keep, I bug Blair regularly, okay, we got, we have some money. Let's see, how can we help people? How can we help people? And we've just been trying to find the right way to do that. We think that this is the best way to do it. We think it's the best bang for our buck. Involves a matching grant program from Business Oregon that they've just released information about late last week. So I'll go ahead and hand it over to Blair. He's been working on this last few weeks, the last few days, including a little bit over the Mother's Day weekend, so. I'm going to turn it over to Blair real quick here.
Hey, so we'd already been looking at the possibility of a grant program for a couple different reasons. One, a lot of businesses are not eager to take on additional loans. And, and also grants are significantly easier to, to manage than loans are. You don't have to worry about collecting them again because you've given them out. But we were pretty excited when the state came out with this program last Friday because it seemed to fit what we already kind of had in mind. They've announced a, a matching fund. Essentially, there's, Business Oregon was a combination of federal funds and some reappraisalation of state funds. They've got a $10 million pot of, of money that they are trying to direct toward those businesses that have kind of fallen into the gap and not been able to receive any federal funding or something that they've, people that for whatever reason have not gotten much in the way of aid. And so what, their, their first round of, of funding is they're accepting applications for that on Monday. And it's a dollar-for-dollar match to a local program. So we put in a dollar, they put in a dollar. And they have a number of restrictions on it to make sure that it goes to the purposes that they have appropriated this funding. It's intended to target businesses in rural areas, businesses with 25 or fewer employees, sole proprietorships in particular, and businesses owned by historically disadvantaged individuals, which is defined as essentially minority or women-owned businesses. So in order to be eligible, the businesses must have been adversely affected either in two, one of two ways, for-profit or nonprofit businesses that were prohibited from operation by the executive order, or for-profit businesses that can demonstrate a decline in revenue greater than 50% in the month of March or April as compared to January, February, or as compared to the same time period in 2019. These businesses must have no more than 25 employees. That's by headcount, not FTE. So if they have a whole bunch of part-timers, they, they could be ineligible for this funding. And then businesses also must have been unable to access federal emergency pandemic funding. Either they were eligible to apply or they have not received funding. I know that there's a number of businesses that have gotten an application through, and yet, for whatever reason at the federal level, have not been able to actually get any money out of it. Go on, next slide. So there are ineligible businesses, of course, also. Passive real estate holding companies or others holding passive investments are not eligible. Nonprofit entities that don't have federal 501(c)(3) status, not eligible. Businesses that are delinquent on federal, state, or local taxes that were due before April 1st, 2020 are not eligible. But that does not include, so April 15th is typically federal tax day. That's been extended to June. So businesses who haven't paid, who haven't done their 2019 federal taxes yet are still eligible for this. This, this does not keep them from applying. Also ineligible are businesses that are not headquartered with principal operations in Oregon. And also businesses that are not registered to do business in Oregon if such registration is required. The sole proprietorships don't have to register with the state, for example, and there's, there's a couple others. Back on ineligible, I don't know, I don't think it made it into the slide, but also one of the requirements is that any business participating in this has to abide by federal, state, and local law. And so that would make marijuana dispensaries not eligible because of that restriction on the federal law. So the state has structured the grant funding. It's, it's interesting. They, they claim that this is a state match to a local program, but really what they're asking for is a local match to a state program because they've, they've even dictated the, the amount of the grant, which is not a bad thing necessarily. This actually fits somewhat within what we were already thinking. So for a business with zero to five employees, there could be one of two options, either $2,500 flat grant or 60 days of their fixed expenses up to a maximum of $5,000. So the business would have to provide documentation of those fixed expenses. But if a business, you know, say they don't, you know, if they're in their judgment, they don't need the higher amount, and they don't want to go through the trouble of providing that documentation, they can just take the, the amount that's based on the number of employees. And that scales up from there. For six to 10 employees, you know, $5,000 or 60 days of fixed expenses up to a maximum of $10,000, and so on, all the way up to $12,500 or $25,000 for a, a business with 20 to 25 employees. One of the concerns that I've had as we're looking is that, okay, if we have somebody who, who is eligible that meets that $25,000 cap, you know, that, that could really cripple a program the size of what we'd be able to put together quite quickly. However, that would have to be kind of a perfect storm of factors because they, you know, a sole proprietorship is, is not necessarily going to fit into that category. And I'm, we're kind of thinking through the businesses that we know of in town, and it's, it seems unlikely that we would have many in that category. But I also am reaching back to the state to get some questions answered on this, and I'm trying to get clarification on how much leeway we have within this scale that they've offered. And so it's possible that we may be able to put an overall cap that's at a lower amount and protect ourselves from something like that. But I'm still trying to get more information back from them on that. Next slide. So the process is we must apply by May 18th, next Monday, in order to have a shot at the first round of funding. Now, they're, they're doing other rounds. Now, they're doing other rounds later, and undoubtedly these, something will change between rounds, but we'd like to be on the first floor if we can.
Are you ready?
What's that?
Are you ready to do this on Monday?
It will be ready. It's in the process right now. But yeah. I'm hoping to get more clarification on a couple of things from the state before we turn anything in.
Well, Trish left, so I don't know how we're going to get it done.
I don't know. We're doing this. So we've got to give them a plan of really how we're going to run this, how we would be advertising the program to the target demographic, demographics, as well as what partners we would be working with. We do need to specify the amount of funding that we're requesting from them and the amount of city funds that we're putting in. And then we need to kind of outline what our application process is, our approval process, what review process we're doing. Next slide. So if selected, we would be notified by May 22nd. Business Oregon would then enter into contract with us for the dispersed kinds of funds. The funds we would receive are, would actually be in the form of a forgivable loan from the state. And if, once those funds are dispersed in accordance with their rules, then the loan is forgiven. If we disperse any of the funds not in accordance with the rules, then we would have to either return the money or we would get charged interest on that portion of the loan. If any funds are left over, they'll need to be returned to the state, if their funds, not our match. And then if it's ineligible, that would not be forgiven. State funds also need to be dispersed within 45 days of receiving them, and I think we could easily meet that threshold, provided we have enough applicants. So we currently, as we've mentioned, we currently do have an economic development fund. We, the only, it's being held for future projects. The only expense coming out of that right now is our CESE grants, commercial exterior improvement program. And so there are funds that we could devote to this that are in current budget and available, essentially. We don't have to go through a budget process to make these funds available. We would recommend allocating $50,000 from this fund and requesting $50,000 from the state, giving us $100,000 pot to help Sweet Home businesses. With the rules that are in place, we anticipate that that should definitely be enough to serve the businesses that we have here that would fit within the categories. We are investigating potential variations within this program. It looks fairly, so far, the answers that I'm getting is that it's fairly, we need to adhere most of it to what they've put out, the one variation being the amount of money that we're putting in and the amount of money that we're requesting from the state. But hopefully, we get more answers on that. So that's, that's the opportunity we have. That's what we're looking at, and then please take any questions you might have.
I know, in discussions I had with Ray today, I came up with six businesses in town that definitely follow that criteria. They definitely, unless they've received funds already, they definitely could use it. Any questions, the counselors?
I just have a comment. I don't know, are we sure that the money's going to be there for the grants from the state? And I also read in the paper, I believe, that Governor Brown is asking all of those places to cut their budget by 17%, if I'm not mistaken, and that's going to be a pretty big amount of money.
My understanding is this has been appropriated for this purpose. And some of it's the federal funding that, through the CARES Act, that went to the states. Also, you know, I know the city of Portland was eligible for funds directly from the feds. Larger cities are able to do that, but all the rest of the cities were kind of left out, and the fed's intent was to, for them to get help through the states. So some of the state money is what this is, is where this is coming from. So from, whether this impacts other budgets elsewhere in the state, I don't know for sure. All I know is they are saying that this is a sure thing, that this pot of money exists, and that if we are approved, we would see it.
A lot of it is.
So is there anything that stops these businesses from being able to get the grant and do this on the run without the city?
This is, it's not possible for them to directly apply for this pot of money through Business Oregon. Business Oregon is only doing this through municipalities and what are called CDFIs. I think it's, I forgot what that stands for. Something, community-driven financial institution recall. Essentially, those, we have one in the area, Community Lending Works Council, is a CDFI, and they're a nonprofit that businesses can get business loans from, and other citizens can get certain programs through them. But nobody is able to apply for this directly.
So there's other programs available to businesses out there?
Well, there's a number of programs that are happening at the state and federal level, as well as private organizations that are offering grants, and we, as soon as I hear about them, I try to get the word out to everybody in town on those opportunities. This is just the one that we found that the state could partner with. We haven't, or the city could.
I know there's the Economic Disaster Grant, and then there's the Payroll Protection Program, but.
Those are all stuff that we can't necessarily help businesses with because they have to have to.
And then those are starting to dry out.
Can remind me, how much is currently in that fund?
The Economic Development Fund, the budget balance is.
I want to say it was $455,000 at the beginning of next year, based on what we were planning this year.
Okay, and how much are we putting in each year?
We're not putting anything in from the general fund at this point every year. It's solely making its interest earnings that's going in there.
From that money that we put in there?
Correct.
A lot of it's been going to SIP, but we haven't had a lot of applicants taking advantage of it.
About $23,000 in the last year.
Twenty to twenty-five a year, yeah.
Okay, and how much interest is it drawing a year?
That's a good question. I want to say $20,000.
So this money that we would be using for this, this $50,000, would be from interest that this account has drawn, right?
Basically.
Okay. That changes the picture for me because I know where this money came from in the first place, and we have counselors who may not be aware of that. And so I think we have an obligation to be very cautious how we spend this money, so.
I will say it was too high, so $10,594 in interest earnings in the 2018-19 fiscal year.
Excuse me, say it again.
$10,594.
That was in the interest?
In interest.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to move ordinance number six for 2020 to third and final reading. Does. What?
We're not there.
We're not there.
We're not there.
This is.
I'm trying to get us out of here.
I was getting ready to second, so.
This is, since this is a time-sensitive matter, so I do need a council action on this to, if we want to give the city the authorization to move forward with this grant program. And since we are spending funds.
Yeah.
Motion in a second, and it'll also need to be recalled for approval.
If I could, we make the motion, if we could ensure that there's the dollar amount that you would be authorizing towards this.
This is the $50,000 that we want to use?
That's our suggestion.
Okay.
Coming out of the Economic Development Fund. And perhaps just for some background, as I recall, that money is left over from a CDBG grant from years ago, which was for several purposes, but one of them was economic development. When that program went away, the feds said we could keep it so long as we asked that we utilize it for similarly related projects.
And that was the $70,000 or whatever it was?
It was $400 and some thousand.
No, but I mean the 70, oh, I'm thinking about something else. Okay.
It was a very significant dollar amount, as I recall.
That was the money that was supposed to go to community members.
Yeah.
Handicap ramps, roofs.
I mean, that kind of stuff. And then it got put into economic development for facades, so we could do the most good for the most people. That's my concern with now taking it and putting it in businesses directly when it was no longer available to individual citizens. And so here we moved it, and now we moved it again, and so I'm very cautious, and it's sticking with me. I know, I want to help businesses. I want to be there. I just don't know if this is the answer, and yet it's tough if they can't do other things, but I think they can, some of them can do other things. And I think coming to the city or to the chamber and saying, okay, so what can we do to stimulate income and business and get that out there while this is going on, because some could be being more creative in what they're doing. I'm worried about that.
Well, the history of that for me, from my standpoint, you might, Mayor, you might mention that, but is that the 70-some thousand, whatever that number was, for those folks to put a new roof on their house and all those kinds of things, nobody wanted to run that anymore, and so it just sat there for years. And so the council decided to put that over into the economic development part. I believe that's true, and we really haven't used much of that either.
So not necessarily saying this is economic development, I'm looking at this economic maintenance. And I'd hate to see more and more storefronts empty in this town. That would not be a positive thing.
I get your thoughts about that.
I know, I get your thoughts, but.
There's no guarantee that they're still going to be successful, though.
No, that's true.
There's no guarantee there.
Not guarantees in a lot of things, but yeah.
So I have a question. So Blair, so there's just one application for the city, for the business to make, and that's to the city?
Yes, the business would apply to the city. We apply to the state to get this program off the ground. From that point on, businesses apply with us.
With you.
And we review the application.
And is there a timeframe for them to apply?
That's something that we could structure. I mean, we could do a first come, first served situation. We could say, we're going to take applications for this period of time and then review them all together, and then do another round after that. That's an option. The one stipulation is that the state has said that within 45 days, whatever money we get from the state needs to be spent, needs to be issued in grants, or it goes back. And so we want people to apply quickly, and we want to get the money out there quickly. If we don't have sufficient applications that meet the criteria, the money's going to go back to the state, and our match would still be there, of course. So there's, you know, there is the possibility that not all of this money would be spent and that some would be returned.
Or you may not get any applicants.
That's possible. What I have seen, I know that we're at least going to get a few.
So I have one more question. So is there a criteria for some kind of plan for how that funding will be used, or is it just going to be given to them?
No, if they meet the criteria, it's a grant to their business. So there's not, there's not any requirement, well, on the one hand, it's kind of good that we don't have those requirements because we don't really have that much of a way to enforce. It would be pretty difficult to follow up. But there's nothing that the state is, has given us when it comes to what they can, what they're allowed to use that money for.
So can I ask one more question?
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, just one more question. So you were talking about getting the word out through local partners, Chamber being one, who else?
One of the, because there are certain groups that the state is targeting, we are looking for partners that will bring us closer to those groups. For example, I have heard about a women in business local group that we could market through to get, get in contact with women business owners. That's one of the target demographics that we'd be trying to reach. So that group, I'm in the process of finding who the main contact person is there. I've talked with one of the members, but haven't gotten the contact information for whoever, the administrator of that group. And we're, of course, searching for others as well.
Okay, I guess I have one more. So 501(c)(3)'s, right? Which means churches can apply, is that correct?
If they have a 501(c)(3),
Okay.
I, I don't know enough about how churches are run to know what, which particular part of the tax code they fall under. Others probably know more, but I believe there's, there's, I believe that there are other provisions that might make those organizations eligible.
Okay.
If they're not a 501(c)(3).
But specifically 501(c)(3)'s?
Yes.
Okay. Very much.
Okay. So there are various forms of 501(c)(3).
Yes, right.
I was a little surprised, actually, that the state narrowed it to that specific category. Becoming a 501(c)(3) is not what it used to be, insofar as the IRS doesn't just hand out that designation anymore like it used to. So they're narrowing that down pretty significantly. I don't have it memorized exactly all of the differences, and I think there's seven of them, I believe, but the (c)(3) is a very narrow scope.
I think I only know one. That's the Friends of the Library.
Counselor, do you have a question?
Oh, I'm sure, we're going to make a motion.
Good. So you're going to reach out through women in business, that group, but are there other ways that you plan on communicating this opportunity? And the second question is, the mayor said he can think of at least six. Do you guys, have you guys communicated? Are there more? How do you find out about those businesses?
I don't know which businesses the mayor is referring to. I just know the businesses that I've heard from directly, and there will at least be a couple of those that would be applying here. When it comes to the groups that we'd be reaching out to, one of the things that we have to include in our application is our marketing plan of getting to those target demographics, and it specifically states that we need to market to those groups first and then to the general public. So the general public part is easy. We can put it out through our social media outlets, we can get touch with the new era I get in the newspaper, those kinds of things, advertising that this is available. When it comes to, before that, the women in business group is going to be an important part of it, but I'm actively searching at this time for those groups that are going to get us to that target demographic. And so if, if there are anybody who's listening to this or any that you know of that are in particular, you know, Asian-American business groups, or Latinx business, or women, or you name it, African-American, if, whatever group we have that is operating here in Sweet Home, we're going to want to advertise through them. The difficult part of that is that we have a relatively small business community in Sweet Home itself. These grants are only going to be available to Sweet Home businesses. So if, you know, if they're outside our city limits, you know, we're not really going to have to be able to do much to help, but if they're the principal location of their business and it is here, then we're trying to reach them.
I think for me, the thing that makes a difference is we know that the interest is covered that, that we're not using the original dollars and taking it from our goals, you know, and so that does change it for me.
And that is a valid point that I wanted to make sure that we were clear on, that is, we have a lot of desires in our economic development wish list, and this is what we have to spend on it, is basically those dollars. So we've talked about using those funds for the Knife River Regional Park Facility, whatever we end up calling that. We've talked about using these funds to help with the roadway, the 24th to go up into that area. We've talked about these funds for other projects as well, and they amount to well over the dollars that we have in that fund right now. So I want to make sure council is aware of those are the economic development funds that we have, and that's all we have. And we can, we put a little bit in, historically, we've been able to put some in on the last couple of years because the economy has allowed us to do that. What we can do in the future, we don't know what that's going to be. What we can do in the future, we don't know what that's going to be. Uh, we don't know what the economy is, is going to be, you know, a year, two years from now. So I want to make sure council's cognizant of that fund is what we have for these wealth of things that we want to do. We're talking about using for, matching money for various park grants, uh, as we improve in, in all of our parks. So, uh, just be cognizant that that's, um, it's a lot.
Mr. Mayor, if I can add one thing.
No.
Uh, I do want to add that there are still some housing rehab loans that are outstanding, um, that were issued by the city at one point, and we, we receive the payback on those rehab loans as the homes sell. Um, and so there's, there's apparently about a $300,000 outstanding balance, principal balance on those rehab loans that eventually, I could not tell you when, will make it into this account. Uh, but I can tell you that at least in the last five years, we've seen 40,000 of it come back. So it's very slow, again, because it's based on when the homes are sold. But there is still 300,000 that will eventually hit this fund as well.
All right. Well, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, see if I can get everything in there. I'd like to make a motion to move the 50,000 from the Economic Development Department for use on the local COVID relief grant program.
I'll second that.
Motion in second. Roll call, Julie, please.
Counselor Gold.
Aye.
Counselor Gold.
Yes.
Counselor Trust.
Yes.
Counselor Nash. Counselor Gerson.
Yes.
Mayor Moll.
Yes.
And Counselor Coleman.
Aye.
Let the record show, we have seven ayes with no nays to move forward 50,000 towards local COVID relief grant program. Turn in by Monday. Um, ordinance bill, nothing on the first reading. Uh, second reading, ordinance number six for 2020, local improvement district amendments by title only.
The change that was made between the first reading and second, I know that it got too late, but I put out a little memo, the only place where we changed was section eight. And it just changed, you talked about it last time, and it just says now a significant of a growth percentage that has to exceed the higher than 33% of the this current annual SSI federal payment amount in parentheses rounded to the nearest whole dollar into and if he or she is married, then their joint growth annual income shall not exceed 120 of said SSI amount. That was the only change in there. Uh, that was discussed a lot of times, trying to, uh, a way of trying to keep the ordinance current as it moves through time, uh, so that if you use a fixed number, then you have to, uh, um, you know, revisit it. This may help, uh, in that process of not revisiting it, but keeping up with the, with the time. That's the idea on it.
Okay. And read it by title only?
Ordinance bill number six for 2020, ordinance number.
This is on the second.
Okay, okay. Uh, Sweet Home Ordinance Amending, uh, SHMC Chapter 3.16 for caning to local improvement.
Any questions, the counselors? The motion in second to move for, uh, third and final reading on May 26th.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Record showing seven ayes with no nays to move it on to third reading on May 26th reading. Ordinance number eight for 2020, text amendments to Title 15, period 12, flood hazard area regulations by title only.
Sorry, we're trying to clarify a couple of things for us. Can we get some clarification on the motion in the second for the last one, please? Can we make the motion?
Counselor Gold, a motion, I second.
Okay, thank you.
On what one, ordinance six?
Yeah, you motioned.
No, I.
No, it was the other way around.
Other way around.
Wow, okay.
See, I thought I was confused, too.
I know those two did, but I'm. Okay, ordinance number eight, 2020?
Ordinance number eight for 2020, text amendments to Title 15, 12 flood hazard area regulations. Um, I believe we have an updating map in here for you. Find which page that is. There was some question last time on how much of Sweet Home is actually involved in this. Hold on, I'm trying to find which page it is.
Page 3,000.
Where about, huh? Page 175. You can read that smaller print. 175 and 176. Council has any questions on that at all?
Any questions? No, I have none. Let me go ahead and read up a title on that, please.
Order number, an ordinance amending the, uh, Sweet Home Municipal Code, Chapter 15.12 to get a flood hazard area regulation. And what bill is it?
Now, this is second reading.
Bill number? Eight, I'm sorry, ordinance number eight.
Ordinance number eight.
For 2000.
Okay, and there's no questions? Any council directors to move forward?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Coleman, second by Gold. All in there, say aye. Opposed? The record show, we have seven ayes with no nays to move it forward to third and final reading on May 26th. And nothing on third reading of ordinances, aye, reports from committees. Uh, nothing, or mayor's report, city manager's report.
We're just, uh, continuing to do what we do, sir. And trying to work with people and, and manage our way through the pandemic.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question. Did, did I read that right, or see that, that the county is going to start doing something on the 24th Avenue road thing?
Uh, yeah, the county has volunteered to start releasing that road for us.
Yeah.
Um, and I think they started, uh, or plan to start, um, marking it. Uh, if they haven't started today, they were planning to do it sometime this week.
Is that just the gravel?
Yeah, I thought they said it was Monday.
The center line was already marked.
Yeah.
This is just gravel?
They're going to, as they said, blaze it. I'm not sure we're going to see any gravel. I think they're just going to clear it, yeah.
So it's a, it's according to the map that we put out, not according to the other map?
Correct.
Thank you.
And there's any on ODOT rail in, in the near future regarding the crossing?
I, I haven't been able to talk with the rail worker about that. I have a number of issues to talk about. I have nothing available for a number of reasons, but I'll keep on plugging along.
Yeah, I'm just curious, because I know blazing the trail ain't going to matter. We can't get across that road.
We've had, I think, it's interesting, we've had very positive verbal conversations and news with Auburn Eastern Road. So we, we, we believe that they're, uh, they will not oppose the crossing, I guess, probably the best way to put it.
Yeah, they, they've committed to giving us a letter, um, that they are not opposed to the crossing, uh, which, which will help with our ODOT rail application. But I haven't received that letter yet, just a verbal commitment that you will.
If you have any chance, Mr. Mayor, we have a new journalist here that might get some stuff right. And she didn't go to U of O, so that's another thing. I cannot remember your name.
Megan. Megan.
Megan, yes. I don't want to ruin that tonight, so.
Well, Megan, welcome, and, uh, any negative reporting, just use Dave's name.
Well, he, he already told me. And I told him that it was, what, this thing would be a lie. And so it's all the same.
Yeah, welcome. Uh, Department of Directors' reports. Any questions, the directors, or?
Ted, real quick, Mr. Mayor, one thing, again, that we've talked about on several occasions is staff's efforts to get information to you that is useful. And we're continuing to try and evolve and produce information that you find useful. So, uh, if you will look, the information has changed in the reports just a little bit. Uh, so what you should be able to see now is the last month that they're reporting, the current month that they're reporting, the year-to-date that they are reporting, so you can see how that falls. The prior year, so you can see the comparison. And we're working on getting, I've asked for a five-year average, so you can see the trend. Some of the stuff, we just don't have five years' worth of data. Uh, and so some of it is a three-year average, or low over a two-year average. And as we move through time, you'll eventually get that five-year piece of information, so you can see how, what we're doing currently falls within all of those trends. So staff's working hard to put all that together for you. Just bringing up a couple of challenges, particularly some of the large return data.
So I do have a couple of things. First of all, um, I really appreciate Rose's, uh, the library's reaching out to the community during this time. Uh, I have friends in Lebanon who are terribly jealous because Lebanon's library is not doing anything, and so they have no books to read. So I just want to give a shout out to Rose for that. And also, Greg, I have a Public Works question. How long, and you may not know the answer to this, but how long does it take ODOT to do a permission slip to get those, though, I mean, a permission signed to get those signs on Highway 20? It's just a bureaucratic thing that you sign a slip, isn't it?
Yeah, so, the way I understand it, and I'll, I'll dig into it a little bit more, but it, I talked to Dominic last week, and we talked about those particular signs, and he said they were going to be arriving, and I said, well, then we'll be able to get the permit, because I hadn't even met with ODOT. The representative with ODOT said it takes an, uh, inner agreement of some sort, and that takes time on their side. So I'm hearing a few months.
Have you ever worked with ODOT?
Well, I can see what's happening with the Highway 20 to.
So, from the fiscal side of things, I made sure that we spent every dime of that street front to make sure we have those signs. Those signs are sitting in our bay right now. So we, we've done the permit process with ODOT. We have several locations where they can be moved to, um, and we're just waiting on that final process. I'll dig into it and get an answer back with you for two weeks of maybe what that kind of looks like. But I was, I was kind of told a few months, and it has to be through an agreement of some sort, because we're putting our devices on their highways.
On our highways.
Their highways.
Our highways.
ODOT's highways.
I, I got one question. So the ones that you have that are extra, I mean, not extra, but that you were planning on, you have 228 and Highway 20, are you going to put those somewhere else in town?
Yeah, we have, uh, we have four more. So we have the two regular ones, we have actual ones that meet ODOT specs, so there's four of those. And the way I believe it is, every time in both directions, the speed changes from like, um, you know, you have, you have it go down at 35 and down to 25, and then it picks back up. We're going to use those areas, and there has to be clear definitions. They don't want them near, like, passengers, like, where you walk, people are walking across streets, because people are paying attention to the sign and not paying attention to the crosswalk. So we worked out those details in both directions. I think we have four locations on Highway 20, and then, um, coming into town on Highway 228.
No, you missed any, I, I maybe I didn't say that clear enough. Are you going to use those signs in the city limits?
In the city.
Not on 20, and not on 228?
We will use.
On Elm Street, or, okay, all right.
We have the two other ones that you've already seen that will remain in town.
Okay.
That we'll use on our streets. Now, we can, but I don't think we need to.
Okay.
We'll keep those for the ODOT highways and use them as such, and then we can move our two around, which we've had, we've had success with, so.
Quick question for you, Greg, just curious, what were they working on 13th and Main? Last couple of days, all the way to.
Do you mean the, the boring?
Is, I'm not sure what they were.
Did they have a trencher that was digging?
Looked like it, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, it's some sort of communications. I, those things make me nervous, to fiber optic to the band across the street.
Oh, is that what they're doing? Okay, I couldn't figure out what they're.
When those boars go through and they hit a water line, you know instantly, but when they hit shorelines, you don't know until it's way there, long gone. It could be years.
Okay.
I've fixed many sections of pipe that have, um, pipe bored through it, so I don't like them personally. Got to have them.
Yeah, just kind of curious. Any other questions, other directors? I appreciate it. Um, council business, just a couple of reminders. One, your deadline for voting is coming up. And this Thursday, 6 o'clock is budget. Don't forget, so, anything else, the counselors?
I, I, I saw a, a little YouTube thing or something about, or on Facebook about the school is going to have some sort of a, uh, celebration for the 2020 kids, and that's, that's pretty cool. Uh, I don't know how that, I saw Steve Thorpe, he presented that, and I don't know how they're going to do it, and he didn't know either. But I think it's like, what's today, the 12th? It's like Thursday, I think, or something, it's the 14th, I think's what he said.
Yeah.
But that, I think that's really a good thing. And whoever put that thing together to put those posters up is amazing. That, that is really cool. You go by, you go by Les Schwab, there's like six of those in there, and they're windows. And, and that's why our, our community comes together. It really is, so.
I agree, it's very good.
Yeah.
There's nothing else, we will go ahead and adjourn to council meeting at 7:58.